My name is Jenny Burns and I am simply a concerned citizen, just like all of you guys are. And this meeting happened only because I was sitting in my pajamas yesterday morning, reading Facebook, and I got fired up. And I reached out to my friends who are sitting up front here and a couple other friends and said, "Would you like to gather at my shop, I own a catering business over on the west side? Would you guys like to gather tomorrow evening and maybe discuss what we can do about this situation?" And then I said, "Well, you post it on Facebook and see if anybody else wants to come." And then this happens. So apparently, there's a lot of people who are like me, sitting around looking on Facebook and getting more and more concerned about what's happened to our water system. And you should be, because it's kind of a big deal when 300,000 people can't drink water. It's a really, really, really big deal. And it breaks my heart. So I'm coming from a good place. I am not an expert by any stretch of the imagination. I'm a caterer and a mom. So that's about all the qualification I have to gather people and talk about issues. But again, my heart's in the right place. And I hope tonight that we can have some time to vent our frustration and then maybe put together some ideas of how to move forward so that this never happens again without our community keeping an eye on our neighbors. So with that said, I'm gonna let my friends up here introduce themselves and talk for a minute about why they are here. And then we're gonna give it up to you guys to maybe express, give you some time to vent and express your concerns. Okay?
Hi, everybody. My name's Karen Ireland. And like I said, I'm, or like Jenny said, I'm a friend of hers on Facebook. She invited me to the small gathering. And I was one of the people that shared the information and it became bigger and bigger and obviously, bigger than even we imagined. But I came and wanted to participate because I have several questions that I want answered and I want to make my idea of what I wanted to see was to make a list of those questions, to make a list of the people who should be answering those questions, and to come up with some steps to go forward to see that that happens. And I know that for me, one of the things that I feel a little bit like Chicken Little, and I mean, I think we all, there are a lot of Chicken Littles saying, "The water doesn't smell good, it doesn't taste good, and you're telling us it's safe." And it's, you know, untrusting my gut and not drinking it and not using it. So we wanna give people maybe just, you know, people that have things they wanna say, some time to say it. There are a lot of people, so we need to keep that brief. And we've got people, someone from West Virginia Citizens Action Group is here. I think the E-council's having an event tonight and they were sending someone down. There are people who have been working on this stuff for a long time and they deserve our thanks and appreciation and they've probably got things already in the works. But we wanna be clued in, we wanna get everyone's name on an email address, or an email address on a list so that we have kind of a repository for, just a way to communicate resources, next steps, things like that, to everybody who's interested. So that's what I'm doing here.
My name's Megan Farrell, and I am no expert. I am a mother and I am a Charleston, west side resident. I bought a house there and I take pride in where I live. And I am not happy with this situation. We joked and we said, "This is what happens when we get a bunch of marketing people together," because we're all marketing people. And we had no idea it was gonna end up like this. But we all have the same concerns and that was the purpose of getting together. So not necessarily an event session, I'll be honest with you. I went and heard Erin Brockovich speak the other night and I feel like I wanna be Erin Brockovich. I really do. She really empowered me and I just, I think that we deserve answers and we deserve to have clean water, point blank. And so that's why I'm here. I'm here to take part in anything that anybody suggests that we should do to make sure that people are held accountable, not slap on the wrist, but people are held accountable. So that's all I have.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Finkton. I'm here because my good friend Angel in the back, you all can turn around, she can give us a good wave. We kinda represent, we kinda represent not only the community, but also as artists. You know, artists have a voice. We have a gift. And we decided that we have a way to kinda voice our concerns as well. So having a good group of people that all come from different neighborhoods, I mean, first let's give ourselves a hand. If you look at what Facebook can do, who heard about this from Facebook? Look at that. As much as we may not care about Mark Zuckerberg, I'm not gonna say that. But look what we can do, you know? And as they said, I'm no expert, none of us are, but we have a voice. Everybody has a voice. And everyone wants to use their voice for negative reasons or bad reasons when this is a time to use it for a positive reason, right? And that's all I kinda have to say.
We do wanna open it up. I think there are people dealing with health issues, people dealing with messes in their homes. And we wanna talk about, give you a chance to talk about your experiences. If there's anyone that wants to start and kind of let us know what's going on or what your real concerns are before...
I'd like to say something before we get started, please.
Okay.
I just wanted to say one thing. I'm here because I'm not really concerned what happened in the past, I am. I don't wanna hear any proposals or who did what or what. I mean, you all might, I don't wanna care, I don't care who plans on doing something in the future. What I want today is the leak to be stopped, the water to be cleaned, life right now. That's what I'm concerned about. Because let's talk about who did what, who's gonna do what, it's not gonna change the situation. So I would like for us to have some type of a plan or whatever, to just say, "Hey, we want the water cleaned up, we want the leak stopped." And then we can get paid later on in the health market. Thank you. I'm going back.
We're gonna give, I'm gonna, about 20 minutes to open it up to the floor, because we all obviously need a voice. And if there's someone in the back, if you can just say who you are and then speak loudly, if you're in the back or in the front, maybe come to the middle so that everybody can hear you, that'd be very helpful.
My name is Rachel Perry. I have a couple of concerns. Apparently Freedom has moved their chemicals to a secondary facility and that facility is not protected in any way, shape, or form. It's in the polka nitro area. So I really recommend that we all call and demand that those chemicals be properly stored because we've moved from one location to another bad location?
It's already been addressed.
Okay. My other concern is, as somebody who is not currently using the water, I refuse to flush at this point in time. The distribution centers are shutting down. I mean, does anybody know who we can call and who we can get ahold of for our own safety? How do we keep the water distribution going when they're like, "Yeah, you flushed your pipes, everything's fine, drink it." I don't want to. And I went to several distribution centers today and water refill stations today, nothing. I mean, there's nothing out there. Well, I still need that.
Well, are they gone from the stamp too?
Okay, 'cause I went to the fire station and they were out. They sent me to another fire station, they were out.
The one in this neighborhood that has water.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you're in the back, did you have...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my name is Brad Eflin. And you know, I've spent probably the last four days passing out water everywhere. I can tell you, if you go to the Red Cross or call them, they can provide you with some because they've had several shipments of water come in today. We were out on the west side passing it out. So if you give them a call, if they don't have any at the distribution stations, although they do continually refill them, they will, they should be able to help you there, okay? So if anybody has questions, just go to the Red Cross.
How long is a Red Cross in the cross lane?
Yes, for the time being. I can't give you a deadline and it's gonna stop.
I mean, that's the question, I guess if...
Right now, they gotta tank it. I mean, truckload, right here on corner, they start dumping it out at seven o'clock.
I hope y'all can hear me, I don't talk real loud. My name's Mike Pushkin, I live on the west side. There's still, you talked about Facebook earlier, there's a site called West Virginia Water Hub. They're still bringing in water from Morgantown, from Kentucky. We had 200 gallons came in today from Kentucky. If you need water, post your need on there, WV Water Hub, they're still bringing it in. You know, I'm not drinking it. I've seen a lot of people come together during this and you're gonna hear, a lot of West Virginians are strong, we come together in times of crisis. I don't know about y'all, I'm tired of being strong in times of crisis. I wanna be, I wanna be, I wanna be smart before the crisis happens this time and I'd like to yield to Maya and I.
My name is Jacqueline Bevan. I personally went to the Erin Brockovich thing and I actually spoke to Erin Brockovich for the past two days. I've been in touch with her, speaking to her myself. She wanted me to relate to you that she has passed on the Friends of Water. So she is paying attention to our page, to your all's page. She posted it up on her page today. So if you go onto Erin Brockovich, you will see that she's actually paying attention. She loves that we are taking this community and that we're paying attention to what's going on. As I spoke to her today, I related to her what was going on with the rashes and the headaches and that we're having issues here with the water and the concerns with the quality of the water. Definitely, I know some of the people are seeing brown water. Bob Bobak that was here actually said that that sediment, that's typical. The green water could be algae, but you would not know that without testing. They both did say that they would not drink the water, that it's still not safe to drink. That came from them as of today. And as of today, she said she's going to talk to him and see that hopefully by this weekend, he will come back and start testing some of our home waters. So I just want you to know that she didn't leave us, that she's still very active with us. If I can get with one of you, I'd like to be part of this and help with you guys and communicate to her what's going on. Because the one thing that we need to do in this community is to not be quiet. It's so important for us to gather as a community and do this together. We have to. You notice it's not being on the national news, we're not getting, we're not getting publicity. Chris Christie's all over the page and you hear nothing about us. 300,000 people are affected and no one's talking about it. They will forget you. Don't let them, don't let them forget you. Keep talking, keep this up. I just wanna say thank you.
I need to say, West Virginia, or Friends of Water is actually, was started by a guy in Florida, Jenny knows.
Yeah, we didn't start this as Friends of Water. I had been communicating with... I just wanna make sure everybody understands, we didn't start, we didn't start Friends of Water. That's a separate organization. I have been in communication with Chris Hale, who started that organization. He seems like a great guy. And I personally intend to be working with Chris on these issues. But this is, if you look around, this organization is you guys. Sincerely, like I said in the beginning, I did not even think that one person would want to gather in my shop tonight to talk about these issues. I am overwhelmed with the response and I'm so grateful that you guys are here. But what happens in this meeting and after this meeting is totally up to the individuals that are sitting around here right now. So I just kinda wanna make that clear, clear. You hold your hand up and then we'll go with you, okay?
So hi, can everybody hear me in the back? Great. And I'm sorry to yell for everybody who's right here, thanks for your patience. My name is Johanna DeGraffanreid. I'm the campaign coordinator for the CARE Campaign, that's Citizen Action for Real Enforcement. And I'm also a coordinator with the West Virginia Clean Water Hub. I think your name was Mike, right? Thank you so much for sharing that. Yeah, please go to Facebook, like that page. It's so that residents of West Virginia can share their needs with one another to help hook up for water for those who have it and those who need it. And then also to coordinate out-of-state deliveries that are coming in. So yeah, again, the West Virginia Clean Water Hub on Facebook, we're doing door-to-door deliveries, but we're also helping to coordinate large-scale donations that are coming in from out-of-state as folks pull out their emergency relief. And then I wanna speak to the CARE Campaign quickly. One of the things with the CARE Campaign is it's an 18-organization coalition of local faith grassroots and community groups and national organizations. And I wanna invite all of you to an event that's happening next Tuesday, that's this coming Tuesday evening. There's gonna be a massive gathering at the West Virginia, we're determining if it's gonna be the Capitol Building or if it's gonna be at the Governor's Mansion, to hold our legislators and our political folks accountable for the fact that there is no regulation happening in West Virginia. There hasn't been for a long time and there won't be if we don't stand up for it right now.
Or enforcement.
Yeah, so come talk to me if you wanna get plugged in with those 18 groups or if you have any questions about that event. Again, it's really, we're, a lot of us are still working on immediately getting folks' water right now and that's our primary concern. And then our secondary and very important concern is making sure that all of us have an opportunity to voice the long-term need of preventing this from ever happening again and that it gets cleaned up right now.
This coming Tuesday.
We also wrote it up here, the 21st.
We're still working out of time, it's probably gonna be in the evening. But again, we're primarily working on water distribution right now, but we're having coordinating phone calls with our organizations over the coming days. And we're going to make sure to create a Facebook group, I'll make sure to send it out to these folks so that all of you can know about it and be invited and share it with all of your friends and community members.
My name's Norm Steenstra and I work two blocks down at West Virginia Citizen Action and I've lobbied at the Capitol and Community Organized for 20 years on environmental issues and I've never seen a spontaneous group like this come together anywhere in the state. And it's really, it gives me goosebumps, I hope it gives you some appreciation too. And it's so diverse, I don't know most of any of you. But whatever we decide tonight, the first thing you gotta do is make sure you've signed in so that we can connect whoever is gonna take that. I can volunteer, our organization, which has been around for 40 years in Charleston, pushing for environmental protection, that we could coordinate that, I'm not a tech guy, but the...
Email.
List serve, is that...
Yeah.
Whatever. But you know, this is totally amazing. And what got me really excited was, I read about, I guess, you're a west sider?
Yes.
And you were gonna have a small little group of people? And I read about this happening and I'm thinking, "That's really cool. There's two different sides of town doing the same thing." And I think there's probably something going on in Putnam County and in Dunbar and in St. Albans and we are all kind of on the same page. And so, you know, somebody said, "Let's clap." I don't know, but that works very well, but sign that thing, Peter, and let's, let's stay connected.
Who needs to sign?
West Virginia Citizen Action tag.
I mean, that is... You're pointing your hat.
And the only thing I'd like to do is to incentivize the media to stress...
Why don't you cut up towards the middle a little bit?
I personally am not gonna touch the water until it's zero PPM, you know? And I'd like the media to keep, keep on them to keep the test results out, up to the minute is, you know what I mean?
Are they out, where are they?
That's what, yeah. It's very hard, you know, I'm searching constantly.
From the media now where it's not zero.
I know we can't get it, I saw that a media outlet today was just basically shunned at the water company and, you know, but that's critical for me, you know? I'm just not gonna touch the water, I'm not flushing, nothing until, and I have a timeframe till after it's zero, you know? For those who don't care, you know, go on and use the water, but for me, not doing it. And I'd say get on their Facebook page, and I've already, I've already done that, get on their Facebook page and say, "Hey, you know, can you please, you know, push the issue up to the minute, testing results, you know? That's just where I am."
I'm sorry, anyone who isn't following Ken Ward Jr., with the Gazette, he posts, he's posting every number, all the numbers as soon as he gets them.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, to follow up on that, these numbers have been coming out, Ken's been doing a great job of A, getting them to release them, which they were not going to do initially.
Right.
And B, getting them out when, when they do come out. I don't know about you guys, but I'm at the point and have been at the point where I don't believe the numbers that are being reported. And I'll tell you what, there's one thing, there's one thing that the powers that be really wanna have happen, and that is for this to go away and go away now.
That's right.
And to that end, personally, I'm not gonna believe it's zero parts per million until it comes out of my tap, in my house, and I have that reading. And to that end, I will tell you that myself and six other concerned citizens hired a private company today. We sampled our water today, it's going to the lab tonight, and we will have our results from our tap back on Friday.
Are you on Facebook?
And we, and we will keep people, well, my new year's resolution was to get off Facebook, but I'm gonna have to get back on Facebook. But I've been on Twitter a lot, so...
Where will you... There's a question in the back and then there's a couple up here.
My main question is, why is it they tell us to flush and I flush for the amount of time on the cold water tap? And even after flushing that amount of time, and some of my taps were even flooded with the sediment, I still could smell a lot of licorice, which convinced me that instead of pipes, that we're helping them clean their pipes on our dimes and there are people who can't afford this.
If you can smell it...
If you smell something, that means something is present. If nothing's there, then we're not gonna smell it.
I know someone at one of the labs actually doing the test and that person was told, "Absolutely, you're not to give any of these results out." And she, the individual said that they, you know, would let me know when it was really zero, but it's strict gag water.
All right, I'll take your question and stand with you.
My name is Carolyn Wesley, I'm a mother and a grandmother of the west side. I work right here at the Roosevelt, a lot of you know, you see me, I work with your children every day. And you said we'd have an opportunity to present questions that we want answers to.
Yes.
One of the questions, and I know we wanna talk about how to fix it now, but in order to figure out how to stop it from happening, we have to figure out who was responsible for monitoring. This chemical was not manufactured in Charleston. I've lived here all my life, for years, we worried about chemicals, we live in Chemical Valley, believe me, folks, if this wasn't one of our locals, this hadn't been brought into us. How did it get here? Who was responsible for monitoring? Did the Department of Highways not catch a truck at the weigh station? Did the, what do you call it, the, who monitors the river? The Coast Guard not monitor a barge? Who let it up here without protocols and how to handle it if it should get loose? Somebody has to be able to answer that. And have to be able to know how to do it and how to contain it. That's the only way you'll prevent it and it may not, it may be M4 or 4M. This time, we don't know what's coming up our river and what could get loose the next time. And another thing, people, I used to laugh about the doomsday preppers, you know? But come on, it doesn't have to be a doomsday, it could just be a water, a chemical leak. So all of us need to learn how to prepare in this valley, how to take care of ourselves in emergencies. And how to take care of each other.
She's got an answer to your question.
She's not answering. Ma'am, I can answer. So the answer to your question is, we're not monitoring. My name is Maya and I am with people concerned about chemical safety. I also started off as a concerned citizen from St. Albans after being sheltered in place, I don't know how many times, in my community in St. Albans. It's not, it's not being monitored for, okay? The chemical that was in the tank is a chemical that's regulated, regulated under a law called the Toxic Substance Control Act. And that law, under that law, 62,000 chemicals were grandfathered in, did not have to be tested before they were brought to market. And that's just, I mean, that's just one of millions of chemicals that are out there, okay? So no one is monitoring, the DEP is not monitoring for these chemicals. There are, there are storage facilities along this river that have chemicals that will kill you instantaneously if you have any sort of interaction with them. And I think that the focus has been on those, but those are not also sufficiently being monitored for by the state. So I'm glad that you're asking that question and you all gotta push to say, "We want this stuff monitored." This is happening at a federal level that, that, you know, there's, there are all these bills that are happening out there. This particular one needs some serious reform because basically, chemicals are being manufactured, transported, stored, applied, and discarded in our communities. And yet, we don't even have the tests of, of how they affect us. So we're kind of the lab rats for that.
And to piggyback off of ours, there's only 12 global companies that manufacture this and only one in the United States. Every other one is in China and Japan that manufactured this particular chemical. So it was brought from somewhere else in the United States for us to just have.
It was, it was brought here by a chemical company called Eastman Chemical Manufacturing in Tennessee.
Okay, let's go with you and then you.
First off, let me introduce myself. My name is Michael Williams, I came from Fayetteville, West Virginia tonight, just to support you guys.
Thank you.
This chemical you all have in your water is not the only chemical we have in our water.
Right.
There are chemicals being put in our water that we are being told that is okay to drink. There's fluoride in our water, there is chlorine in our water. If this does not stop now, it will continue until we are killed off. We need to stop this now.
Yeah.
I suggest, like this gentleman right here, everybody, test their own personal water.
It's too expensive, we can't afford it. People can't afford that.
It's scary, it is expensive.
There, there has to be a way to dance around these issues. Because they, they find a good way to do it. Well, okay.
Hi, Robert Friedlob. I grew up here, I left, I worked, joined the military in 85. I've been with the Department of Defense, I was a hazardous material preparer inspector and shipper for 17 years. I lived in Anchorage, Alaska. The, this state, since I moved back in 2009, I don't know how they're getting away with what they get away. And the only way you're gonna do anything about it, because they do it in Alaska, is you need to get representation. The reason, the 99%, failed in the cities with the whole, we are the 99%? It's because they failed to structure, they didn't get representation. There's, you can't swing a dead cat without an attorney in this town. So we need to find a company that will pro bono this and work for you. I was on the other side of the fence because I knew, I'm an all-mode shipper, I ship chemicals, air, train, and, and commercial. And I used to have to speak to people like you. And Alaska, because we bought it in the 50s as a dumping ground for chemicals, they've been cleaning it up for 40 years. And they abide, they have to abide, everybody's watching. This state doesn't abide by MSDS rules. It's handshake deals, I don't know how they do it. When I flew in here in 2009, after living in Alaska since, for, since, God, 17 years, I got a sinus infection for 10 months. I go to the doctor, they tell me it's the canolic rub, like I'm gonna mutate and learn how to live here. You can't beat this, but these, the ones that just get loud and try to, and try to organize, they fail unless you get representation. The ones that get representation, you will succeed. Been doing this a long time. I'm retired, 25 years, 48. So you, find an attorney, find a firm, I mean, you're with an action group, you say you can't afford to get the chemicals out, yes you can, you need to find, someone will do this for free.
I'm volunteering.
Home waters, there's a lot of this that can't afford...
You get a firm, you get a firm that will fight for you pro bono, they will make you, they will make that firm test that water, you can win. It happened all the time in Alaska. Kingsham, Alaska, all these, they dumped chemicals since the 40s and they had to clean it up. Because small firms, that grew into large firms, represented action groups.
Attorneys in the range, I know, would be absolutely on board to represent us.
That's the only way you're gonna do it.
At the end of this meeting, I'm gonna get the names of all set, anonymously standing around attorneys for that, that group, I'm sure.
My name is Maya Thomas. I have four kids of my own and I, my concern was my children going to school on Thursday. My baby boy is 11 and he said, "Mom, I drank the water all day at school, so now what's gonna happen to me?" So what are the long-term effects of this?
I know you've been following me on, I know you've been following me on, I know you've been, we're friends on Facebook, but the scariest part is also my concern... but the scariest part is also my concern, just like you, is not only are there effects from it being in the water, but I don't know if you guys have read the effects of breathing it, of inhaling it. I challenge you guys to go look, I read a report where this chemical was being tested on mice, being tested on rats, and all that stuff, and inhaling it caused...
I heard the only thing it was tested on was rats. On top of which, I got up that morning, and I went to the shower, and I know when I rode across that bridge, I saw that stuff in the water, and I thought, ice is still on the water?
It's because, it's because it's a pollutant.
Yep, the sad part is, is we won't know until the future. So if we go to the doctor three years from now and say, we're having an issue with breathing, you're not gonna be able to go back and say it was that chemical. Well, they're not gonna be able to go back and say that, because they're gonna look at you like, what?
That's also another scary part, I'm a cancer survivor, so what do, I mean, what are, what's down the road for me? You know what I mean? A relapse or something different?
Contact the Red, if you all, if anybody doesn't have access to, if you, if your only source of getting water right now is drinking out of a tap, make sure you connect with the people who are providing, who are bringing bottled water in here. Call the Red Cross, connect on Facebook to that page, drink that water, don't drink the water until, who knows when. Don't drink the water.
Is anybody else going through that same situation, they had a kid that drunk it, or someone that drunk it in school, and you're having issues?
I do a daycare for the state in my house, and I currently have a seven-week-old baby. I was boiling that water and mixing his formula with that. Of course, I didn't know, you know, you don't know, that's what we're supposed to do, boil the baby's water. I boiled it. And two weeks ago, he broke out with a rash. His siblings have eczema, and this is what her doctor told her was wrong with him. We thought it was because we were adding cereal to his milk, but now that this has come about, now I'm afraid that that baby has broken out in that rash because he's ingested this water. Our children, these are our children, this is our home, this is where we live, and the people that we live with don't even care enough about themselves to take care of this the way it's supposed to be taken care of.
I bet they're not drinking the water.
Right, and I'm not, I have not flushed my system. Everybody talking about their eyes burning, their throats are burning. I have other people's children in my home, so I'm supposed to flush my system, fill my house with this chemical for these people to bring their children into my home, and that's not safe. So I have not flushed anything, I am using bottled water to wash dishes, do everything. I have not, I don't want it, the fumes in my home, so I'm leaving it still, like the gentleman said, 0.0 is safe. And until I hear that and I believe that, I'm not using my water at all, indefinitely.
There was a lady at the town hall meeting the other night, that she has a three-month-old, I think it was a three-month-old who was eczema, severe, and to the point where her scalp was bleeding every time. Or the past, well, that was like my dad, so she was using bottled water, the baby that was like bleeding.
Yeah, and he is starting to clear up since I've been using the bottled water, I've noticed his rashiness is going away.
And I mean, that speaks volumes about not using it, you know? Like, it speaks volumes in itself by not...
You're not getting my money for a water bill because I'm not using your water.
I live, I live on the East End, and the first, we were the first group that came through, and I was like, I'm still not using it. You know, I went to the dentist today, and they were like, yeah, I'm gonna have to use this water. I said, yeah, I'm gonna have to reschedule. I'm gonna have to reschedule, I'll keep this toothache, it's not that serious, you know? And it's all about that, actually speaking up and not using it, instead of saying, hey, they flushed it, so let's go ahead and take a big gulp. A gulp today could cause you your life. A gulp today could cause your, your life, when it, just as simple, we've lived, how long, four days off of bottled water? I can do it for a few more weeks, I can do it till we get answers.
I can do it for the rest of my life.
And then helping each other, helping each other. Saturday, I was out delivering water, and I was scared, because so many people I didn't even know I was delivering to, so I had my pepper spray, because I didn't know who I was. I was already, I was like, I'm going to these doors and giving people water, but it's just helping each other, letting people know that it's just not cool to just go start drinking it and showering in it.
Okay, I wanted to, we're just gonna take a couple more, and then what I'd like to do is maybe move, and we're kind of having some questions, but if there's anybody here that had, obviously, we've got some people here that might be able to answer some concrete questions, and then we're gonna do that for a few minutes, and then what I'd like to really move forward into is what to do next.
Yes.
There's a lot of people here, and again, what I've said is that you're, it's not about we're gonna help you guys, we're helping ourselves. And, and we've got, this, nothing's gonna change unless it comes from the ground up, and you just gotta prepare, but this is gonna be an endurance race. But if we're tired and we're ready to go, I think that we could really take this meeting and do something productive. Like I said, I think you've had your hand up for a while, and you've had your hand up for a while, and then we're gonna move into some questions.
Hi, Amy Breedlove, just really quickly, I'm a big, huge, organic person.
People can't hear you, you're gonna have to speak up.
Amy Breedlove, I live organically, and this is just making me insane, because I don't use makeup with chemicals or lotions with chemicals, anyway. Teresa Dale, she's a nationwide doctor, she's written a book, she has great detox items, drinks that you can make, of course, Mission Savvy, we have downtown, is a great place to go to get some detox as well, because you want to get these chemicals out of your system. And keep in mind, too, that bottled water is not regulated, so bottled water has chemicals in it, too. So we have to be careful with any type of water, of course, this right now is really bad. But Teresa Dale, and of course, Chris Carr, and Dr. Mark Hyman, check out those people, and get your systems as clean as you can while we're going through this crisis.
Can I check right now real quick and see if anyone has not signed the sign sheet? Raise your hand if you haven't, we'll get that to you, because I really think a key will be keeping me in contact with each other.
Yes, hello, I'm gonna introduce myself and my organization, because we're working for you. I'm Angie Rosser, the Director of the West Virginia Rivers Coalition, and I've been working on water quality issues and drinking water protection for many years. Had incredible challenges, because our politicians are owned by the industries. And this, what I'm seeing tonight, is a strong message to reclaim our politicians, to let them know that we own, that we vote for them.
Yeah!
Something has happened like this. This has been going on for decades in our state, and we have been working hard these past five days of accessing the national media, getting them to shine a light of our struggles that we have been trying to endure for decades, and it's time for the nation and the world to look at what is happening in this state. So that's what we're working on, and the next step is going to be holding our lawmakers accountable, because as early as Friday, we're gonna see some legislation out from our governor and our leadership in the legislature, and we need to pay close attention to what that is. We do not want a ban, day, quick fix to this problem. This is about systemic issues. This is about a big picture, not just an isolated incident, but the things that are happening with our system for years. So my organization is trying to raise the resources to make sure we get an independent assessment from scientists, from legal policy experts, so that we are not depending only on our governor or the DEP to tell us what we need to do. We need to have our own people who have our interests at back, who are willing to tell the truth and to get that out there. So wb rivers.org, if you can put that up as a resource, because we will be at the legislature working on this, wanting you all to be involved in contacting your legislative officials, trying to get some comprehensive recommendations of what is really gonna create meaningful transformation here. The other date I would like to put up on our calendar is September 17th, that is Environmental Day at the legislature, it could be a good opportunity for really a lot of people to gather at the Capitol Building to send a message.
My name is Delegate Peggy Ford, and I wanted to say, I certainly respect what you're saying, all politicians are not owned by anybody. I will say, and I, and I don't want, this is not my meeting, I came here actually from the Capitol, we just finished meeting, and I came here because I want to hear what you're saying, and I've stood back here and I'm listening to things that you're saying, as I have on Facebook and Twitter and everything else throughout this whole process. And I agree with what she is saying in regards of making sure that you don't just get upset today, it goes back to where we feel like we're somewhat normal, and not be active at the legislature. I think that, as we all know, we're basically in our positions because you do vote for us. And so, instead of, and I have to be clear, I think that instead of saying all politicians, when you find a politician you feel is not appropriately doing what you feel, then you have to find the ones that do, want to do what you want to do. And we have a lot of them up there, whether you believe it or not. I want to say that all of us, I'm affected just like you, I have not had a chance to go home and even flush my water yet, because I have a volunteer right here who has helped us distribute water. You know, he actually came out, lifted bottles, and gave all kinds of stuff out to people, and Mountain Mission and things like that. So, you know, we have a lot of people in the area, and someone said something about water, not having water, while I certainly understand that there are chemicals that may possibly still be in bottled water, there is still water distribution centers being given out, giving out water, and they will be. We have a lot of water that are coming from other states. So if you're not comfortable with drinking the water, use precaution, use common sense, do what's best for your family, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. You know what you've always had to do when it comes to taking care of your circle, do that. And at this point, I mean, and I, and I'm not gonna end it here, there's a lot of things that we need to discuss, without a question. And, and I, I'm happy that this was called, because I think that it's necessary for us to come together as a community. But what's also more important at this stage, too, is getting those people who don't have water. I mean, there is, we're in this room, and I'm not, I don't know everyone's situation, but there's a lot of people who don't have water, have not had bottled water, elderly people who can't come out, and they've only had a case of water, and people are trying to do that. So in the process of you all motivating yourselves, and organizing yourselves, please make sure that you're volunteering yourselves to people in your area that you know did not have water. So I, I definitely understand your frustration, so I don't want you at all to believe that that's not something that I'm gonna be concerned about, that's why I'm here. And at the appropriate time, we're gonna address it. But at the same time, we still have to get water in people's systems, and in their hands. So please do that, and of course, I'm open for questions, if that's permitted, or if you all have something, you all can contact me, my office number, I can tell you now, And I'll tell you that I will look at the legislation that is presented, if there's a concern, I will advocate the way this needs to be. Everybody in this room may not be happy, but I promise you, I'm gonna fight for this district. This is what you all put me here to do, I'm affected just like you, I'm a citizen outside of being a legislator. So we're all in this together, we really, really are, and I want you all to do that West Virginia kindness I've been talking about. Pay it forward, give some people some help, and then let's organize, and then do whatever we feel is necessary for the future children, our children here and future generations, all right?
On Facebook, because at home Facebook, because a lot of information that came down directly was from being friends with her, so that's one big thing she has been going through this every step of the way.
Can I, can I piggyback off what she just said? He's been, my name's Seer Savin, I'm from Dunbar.
Yeah, it's House Louden.
I'm Seer Savin, I'm from Dunbar, this is Matt. He's actually been trying to contact the CDC to get any questions answered, Mansion, Earl Ray, Homeland Security, you know, just...
All of them.
All of them, I mean, everybody.
There's three county commissioners, the mayor of Charleston actually does have jurisdiction to put sanctions against them, even though he went on the news and said, it's not in the city limits of what his problem, his exact words. And he has jurisdiction to go outside two miles of Charleston to put down sanctions or whatever. And then you also have all the politicians that are running, every website I go to, not yours, I ain't been to yours. Every website I go to to try to talk to somebody, fill this out, donate, you know what, I can't donate right now, sorry. All my neighbors can't donate right now. So when it comes down to it, you know, everybody I've talked to, I've went uptown, oh, he's not in, he ain't here, I understand they're busy doing their work, but they're not returning anybody's phone calls, and they're not returning anybody's emails. So they don't even really have the answers that I'm looking for anyway.
And they're ignoring the comments on Facebook.
Right.
Well, I think it's sort of in crisis mode right now, and I think that what, what they should have said was pretty accurate, that A, you know, they're just trying to get to that point where we can actually use our water, I mean, I'm not like, in drinking land, or how things are being handled.
Well, my thing is, I mean, no offense to the news that's here, but I watched a newscast Monday, and they tell me, oh, well, the people are back in school cleaning my kids' silverware, kitchenware, that...
And they weren't supposed to flush the water yet.
Right, and the very next story, they got guys, well, I was in my clean zone, and they flushed my water, and I got all this stuff, but they just washed that water for my kids.
Yeah, and the CNN comes out this morning and says, wait a minute, wait a minute, the one part per PPM was an estimate, people, what is that?
Exactly, and I got a letter from the CDC...
That is ridiculous.
I got a letter from the CDC...
Won't sell me a lock or something?
Right, I got a letter from the CDC today, email. You know what they told me? Contact West Virginia American Water.
Here's my other thing, there's such...
Well, you shouldn't contact West Virginia Water, it's a private company.
That number that they're giving you, that one parts per million, they should, that's just a bad...
Okay.
They shouldn't even be even discussing numbers until it's at least one part per billion.
Right.
And they said that it wasn't scientifically come up with it, basically, they just pulled
this out, they just compared this to this, and this is what we're gonna say it is.
And there's a good chance it will never be studied, it's used in such a small, narrow band, that this may not even be studied after this.
Here's the issue, that there was an article by, that is posted, I have the website, the website actually has a story talking about how Guza said that he's having so many, they're having so many more cases of people in the emergency room since this flushing started. It was posted on the CDC's website, you know, they have deleted it since then. They do not want that on their website.
I know they have a lot going on in their heads, and I know that also, we, I mean, I'm kind of walking a balancing act, trying to keep the, the meeting moving, and also honoring everybody's ability to talk, but I think if we could just give a few minutes, we've got a lot of people here that have worked in the trenches for a long time, and obviously, we've got people, you know, that might be able to answer some questions. Is there anybody here that has some burning questions that they feel like they need answers before they walk out the door?
How do we take a shower? You know, we can't drink the water, how are our kids, how are we gonna take a shower to go to work? How are our kids gonna take a shower when school gets back in? How are we gonna do that? I understand water's coming in to drink and, and stuff, that's not gonna help us take a shower.
There's one, there's a small, there is a small fix, there's a five...
There's a shower.
There's a five-stage filter you can buy for your shower, and it will break it down to 90%.
Even the carbon filters, Robert, won't break that.
It will break it down to 90%, but like you said, everything has to be down to 1 billion, not 1 million parts. The reason being, is anything that's at 1 million parts can react with anything else in the water. And I don't know, I think our water's not completely free of other chemicals. We have no idea what it's gonna react with, but if they break it down to 1 billion, it can not have an adverse reaction with the other chemicals in the water. But a five-stage filter that you can get online, I don't think they sell them here, it will break it down to 90%. It's storing pebbles in the Grand Canyon, but it can help.
How much is a car?
They're 23 bucks.
You show that again? I love that idea, that idea. It's like for more, you can get better with it, but eat your water, put it in there, there's a little fudge, and there's a bomb, you can twist it, seal it off, it was like five, 10 bucks, something like that.
Works. But I would say that if you can smell it, it's there, don't use it, you know, use it to flush with, but that's it. I mean, I'm gonna be drinking bottled water for a long time, I showered in it this morning. The pipes, the pipes that I, where I was, when I took a shower, you couldn't smell it. If I can smell it, there are tons of other chemicals.
We haven't drank the water here in five years.
What's in the air, yes, there's a lot of stuff in the valley here, so...
If you're gonna shower, but, and once it gets to a safe level, and I would, honestly, I would wait at least a few weeks before I would even do that.
Absolutely.
Like, the, the word that I've heard is step in, turn the water on, step, you lather yourself, step back in, wash it off. You should only be getting minimal, minimal water on yourself.
That makes no difference.
It does, it does.
They don't, it doesn't make a difference with that MCM, it, it doesn't, it really doesn't.
Well, but I mean, like, what if, if we're supposed to trust our guts, what about our personal experience? I mean, I know that when I started to flush last night with the hot water, it, I started coughing up lumps. But you're saying it would be either way.
It's, it's chemical, they don't care about, chemicals don't care about temperature. I just want to make a suggestion, and this is something that can be carried forward by the others in the conversation, there's an, there's an entity, there's an entity that we, I think we've all been leaving out of the discussion, which is the Public Service Commission. Has anyone mentioned the Public Service Commission or thought about it? And maybe is the...
And maybe as the experts begin speaking or so, as we carry the conversation? We, they, that is an organization, that's, you know, an agency that has an enforceable duty to protect our water and to ensure that it's admitted, it's provided to us in a reliable and a quality way. And we can all contact the public, in addition to contacting lawyers and legislators, we can contact and intervene in proceedings before the Public Service Commission, which is another route that we can individually and collectively use to enforce a better outcome for ourselves. They have an enforceable duty that we can activate by filing complaints to the Public Service Commission. The West Virginia Public Service Commission regulates the price of water, and they also can regulate the practices of utility companies like West Virginia American Water. And we should request that they do that, that they use their authority to compel better practices from this company. So I want to put that out, and maybe going forward, people can think about filing complaints with the PSC and asking the consumer advocate at the Public Service Commission to act emphatically on our behalf. And this, please bear that in mind, that's my question.
Very good.
Sam.
The thing that I, I walked in a couple of minutes late, but visibility, visibility, visibility. You know, I have family all over, like you probably do too, and I feel like people don't know this story outside Charleston, aside from NPR and our local coverage from our local news. It's been really shitty, if I can say that word. It's been really terrible, I mean, Jon Stewart, we were on Jon Stewart for a couple of minutes too. In addition to our efforts at going to the, you know, the Public Utilities Commission and West Virginia Water and getting the answers, I feel like we need to let the world know that we are thinking about this because some of the public perception is that West Virginians don't care, that West Virginians are laying down, that West Virginians are in bed with the coal companies, that, you know, life has gone on. In fact, that's what I read. This is, three hundred thousand people are without water, yet life has gone on. Yeah, life went on because everybody banded together and took care of each other, not because we're laying down about this. So I'm wondering, is there any effort at having any sort of like a peaceful rally? I'm imagining, just like people walking down Kanawha Boulevard, has that, has that been, okay.
Tuesday.
Okay. Like, I'm picturing, you know, CNN panning across the beautiful capital and the river and seeing thousands of people walking down Kanawha Boulevard saying, "We don't have all the answers yet." But goddamn it, we are aware of this and we're not taking it laying down.
Y'all, I've talked, I've talked to Huffington Post, CNN, New York Times, National Geographic. There's been a story today in Al Jazeera about the lack of water, Al Jazeera America, about the lack of water.
Actually, there's been a lot of our politicians going on, CNN, MSNBC, and the rest of them, and they get on there and say, "Well, the water's going to be fine." Joe Manchin said Monday or Tuesday, he said, "Everybody'll have water by tomorrow," and then he pushed some book.
That's right, that's right.
So, use your voices.
The Department of Homeland Security went on TV and said it was non-toxic, non-hazardous.
So use your voices, contact the national media to tell them that they need to be paying attention to this issue.
While we're talking about publicity, I have something just quick to say. I was talking to a local House of Delegates, Mike Bushkin, he's running for House of Delegates, and I was talking to him last night, you know, we're having a clear, concise conversation about this, and what is infuriating me more than anything, CNN, the headlines and on Facebook, is calling it a water crisis, even more infuriating, calling it a water situation. This is a chemical spill, okay? This is like a chemical leak for weeks that turned into a huge, massive chemical dump, a chemical spill. So this is just like, remind us, those of you who are willing to call these places, these magazines, and make contact with these reporters, if there are reporters in the area, if there are politicians, just keep in mind, like, you know, that, the power of words, you know, the way we speak, if we're calling this a water situation, you know, and we're downplaying the importance of what's going on here. You know, we've been poisoned, you know, so let's call it a chemical spill like it is.
And I have to, my job, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have to.
Y'all, it's hard to hear. Because of the fact that I had to make sure that the district was calm while we figured out how to get you water. If I call a crisis, I'm panicked, that means people go to food banks, like, taking water and start fighting. So there's a reason for why, now, when you're talking about national media, it is a crisis. I mean, we're dealing with something, but when you're talking about communities, we can't, I mean, I have to be real clear, guys. Be infuriated, but be proactive about it.
What do you think we're doing?
If you get fired up to the point that you're just angry, we're not getting anything done. You have to be mobilized enough to say that it's a crisis in our community, yes. But you have to be able to keep people just as calm enough to get their position out. To make sure that you're very clear to what legislature needs to be passed, what regulations you feel need to be done. But if we hype each other up, we're not going to listen to who needs water. And I'm sorry, I have to be very responsible about that now. So I definitely understand, and I'm not trying to say you're wrong, but I'm saying you have to be also careful with who you're talking to. Think about a room full of kids and say, "Crisis." Think about a room full of senior citizens and say, "Crisis." So, so, yes, mobilize, be active, but be mindful, that's all I'm asking you to do.
I'm really tired of hearing how nice West Virginians are, we are, we take care of ourselves, but we allow our politicians to run all over us.
They run over us.
We have been poisoned, I wish they would act like, while we've been poisoned, like they go after a crack house.
Right.
You know, and I understand we don't want to be, but we got to get over.
They monitor our restaurants, clubs, and then they're monitoring our own health. While we got behind the kitchen door every week, every week. They gonna tell us where not to eat, but you gonna let us drink some poison water.
And I absolutely agree with that. I was with the Health Department today down in my shop getting the thumbs up to be, to be open again. I could go on and on about that, but we got a lot of great energy in this room, and I'm really, really very excited about it. And what I, I don't want to see is that we leave here and dismantle without kind of a next step.
Can you set up another meeting?
I think that is, that's good. I think another step is that we'll probably try to, of course, I'm not so techno-savvy, if somebody would like to volunteer for this, set up a Facebook page that we can all like, so we can all start putting information out about the next step. There is a rally, we've got that, and there, I think that should be a next step. Another, I, the thing that I like is that our legislature is in town right now. And as citizens, we really need to be pressuring our lawmakers to first and foremost put something in place that these chemical companies that are producing and storing hazardous chemicals are regulated, just like I am in my catering shop.
Right.
But I think Karen wants to make a suggestion. I think if we could get some more concrete suggestions and then, right this very second, I'd like to see a show of hands, if we have another meeting, who in this room is going to be willing to roll up their sleeves and start working?
Lights and people.
Alright, you guys are the face, so let's take.
Bigger place.
We've got a bigger place, I already volunteered.
You gotta forgive this, because like I said, this started from like, five people with them, me and Angel had like, eight people, and look at this, so.
Yeah, yeah.
She has, she has.
Karen's got something that she says, and then these folks here, we're not ignoring you, and then we'll kind of try to wrap it up, okay?
Okay, do you want to just, the three here and one here, do, comments quick, and then I have a suggestion after that. So, just, we'll go in a circle.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because my government called it a situation and not a crisis, my three older brothers don't believe their little sister when she says, "Don't drink water." So how can I convince my three grown male siblings, that each have two children, two of those are infants? Because they believe their government and the news agencies over me. So please, tell me what to do so that my nephews aren't drinking this water.
Yeah, how can we get our government, how can we get the legislature perhaps, to announce that it is not safe and that they do not know? Because our government is telling us this.
They are guessing.
I think, you know, and that is, since there's safety in numbers, people feel, people who, there are, are, people who can be on the forefront of a movement, and there are people who follow, and those people are just as important, and so, the more we say it, and the broader that message becomes, I think the more convinced other people will become, and, I mean, and that's a valid question. If anyone has suggestions, then we can talk about that.
Take them some bottled water.
My name's Kurt Bryant, I used to be the environmental and legislative coordinator for Citizen Action Group, did what Norm currently does for years, and founded West Virginians Affordable Healthcare. And I think, I think of a three-point strategy needs to be adopted. One, we need water, and we need safe water for everybody in Kanawha Valley. Two, we need to hold the people who were responsible for this accountable. And I mean, not just the chemical industry, but also the people who didn't permit this facility, who didn't inspect this facility, we need to hold them accountable. But three, never again.
Right.
Never again. We should set up a safety chemical protection board to make, with citizen involvement. We need safety zones for water intake, so there are no chemicals that can be mixed in our water again. I've stood up at the Institute after Bo Paul, I've been at other places where we've had these incidences before. I'm sick and tired of them, I want prevention, I want never attend one of these meetings again. And that's what we need to do.
Yeah, so, just, me? Just real quick, I want to make a couple of points, and I, first of all, commend all the energy that's in this room. My name is Bill Price, I live here on the East End now. But there are people that are still under this ban in the coalfields, particularly in Boone County and other areas. And so this rally that's being planned for Tuesday, I want to be clear here, that stay tuned for more information about that, because until everybody's water, until everybody is not under this ban, we're not going to do that rally. Because we want to make sure that everybody is in that same kind of level. So I don't feel like, I wouldn't feel like going forward with a rally here in Charleston until people in Boone County are relieved under that ban. That doesn't mean the water's going to be safe, let me be clear here, okay? But, day after day after day, people down in Boone County, people in other parts of the state are potentially exposed to that chemical. And I think in the word of solidarity that we do, that we do that rally, that candlelight vigil, once that ban has been lifted, so then we can move forward in units.
I'd say, let's do it now, take the message with us.
I say.
While we're going to wait for them, we can go represent them now while they're in the thick of it. That's part of us taking care of them.
If you wait till the ban's lifted, there's a bunch of smog and this kind of all over the state that doesn't have clean water anymore.
Right, I understand that, and I'm just saying, if the ban is lifted by Monday.
Sir, what are my nephews supposed to drink while we're in Boone County?
You're not, you're in Boone County?
No, they're here, and we don't have a water ban, and my brothers are serving it because they believe our government.
I would tell them not to drink the water here.
I did.
Okay, alright. We have a question from the gentleman in red. Do you want to stand up and be as loud as you can?
When I'm doing this announcement really quickly, like I said, we are still planning and coordinating. We are going to keep all of y'all in the loop with hopefully this information that these coordinators have collected from y'all. But please don't forget about individuals who still have this ban and who won't have clean water after this ban is lifted, just like has happened here in Charleston.
Right. We have a, we have a question from someone right here in the red.
Um, if you need water, or a lot of water, you can get a rain bear, whatever. And you can keep the rainwater, and if you want to take baths.
Okay, what's your?
Jackson.
Jackson, thank you. Jackson! One more, two more.
My name is Patricia Ansley. I transplanted here in ninety-nine, and very shortly thereafter, I started drinking bottled water. My background is in radiation physics and commercial nuclear power plants, and thereby studied chemistry and all the regulations that we had to do and how we had to travel. In nineteen eighty-six, when I was working, the apartment I was staying in poisoned me to the point that I was in hospital for eleven days and nearly died. One of the things that I found out when I tried to take action is I had no documentation. Well, from a very good lawyer, and I have seen this put into action since then, everybody affected needs to get a, like, one of those composition of, a bound, you cannot lose paper. Start making a journal, date, time, incident, whatever. I can tell you when you go to court or when you try to take action, if you present this documentation, instead of going into crisis mode and screaming and jumping up and down about, "Ooh, this happened to me, and ooh, this happened to somebody else," hand it to them in writing, date, time, effect. Personally, because of my background and because of what happened to me then, I have not used my water except to flush my toilet. My apartment was like a chemical fog from the fumes coming from my toilet alone. I have had dry, scratchy throat, dry nasal passages that bleed when I blow my nose. I have migraine headaches, I have red, itchy eyes and bloodshot eyes, and now I'm starting to have double vision. You can bet your ass I've got all this shit written down, and you need to. Because if you do not write this down, you're going to sound like a bunch of ignorant people. But if you have this written down and say, "This is exactly what happened and when it happened," no question, it will stand up in court.
Okay.
Can I say one last thing?
Yeah, and then, because you know what, it's hot and we can't shower.
Again, I've seen a lot of this, the only way you're going to change it is you got to take new regulation over compensation, don't take a payoff. The state's been doing it too long, make them, there's a lot of places in Alaska, a lot of those little towns, the ones that took the payday, these guys have huge pockets. The ones that took the payday, they're sick. The ones that said, "No, we don't want the money, we want it to change," they're great. Don't take any payoff, don't let them give you money. Tell them to show me the change, you want clean water, you want clean air, you don't want the cash.
The other thing that I wanted to say about that briefly, I work for, well, we need to reach out to the people that are naysaying.
But we have a timeline on the venue.
Yeah. They have a timeline. Alright, hey folks, I just would like to say that, one, I'm sorry that whoever's voice hasn't been heard, didn't get here. We do have a timeline amount on the space and we got to clean up. The other thing is, I am, I just have a question, are you guys fired up? I don't sound like a bunch of people that are fired up, let me ask you one more time.
Well, we're dirty, it's the dirt.
Are you guys fired up? Yeah!
About some next steps that are already happening.
Okay, quickly, okay.
I'm a member of council for this district.
Hold on, hold on, timeout, timeout, timeout. I know that you guys want to talk, and I appreciate it, we really have to get out of here.
I know.
Can we, maybe, if you guys can talk to me, then what I can do is put it out in an email? And, just because we can't use this space anymore doesn't mean that you can't, like, walk out and keep it going. I'm really excited about this. And I know that you guys are really excited about it, and I feel horrible about cutting you off. But this is our last meeting, we're going to reschedule, we've got a space that's going to be bigger, bring friends.
First Baptist Church, remember.
First Baptist Church is volunteers, they're straight, so they could hold two hundred people. I know you're fired up, we have a rally coming up, and we're going to have another meeting, and this is going to be top-down approach, and again, thank you guys so much.
I want to let you know, I want to let you know, I served this area on city council, and when fracking was coming about, I brought up the issue of protecting our water intake area. And how about in the Elk River Valley? This chemical turns the gas at a hundred and forty degrees.
Please call for a chair.